And so I'm going to start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the December 11th, 2024 School Board Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Joshua Allard excused, Melissa Bacon excused, Suzanne Bauer, Mark Cardizano, Elizabeth Day, Michelle Felicetti, Anastasia Ferguson, Eric Garrison, Jody Lane here, Jennifer Mayo, Amy Morrison, Sean Perkins excused, Wes Finney, Adam Tangway excused, Angela Tardif, Judith Vasal excused, Olivia Lasky, Walker Vivian. We have a quorum with 11 directors. 12, Dominic Vermette. I was counting. So one, two, three, four. We have a quorum with 12 directors present. Adjustments to the agenda, I would like to make a motion to add under the first read of the policies, an action item to approve the proposed flyers for school board meeting information and prospective school board member flyers, those two flyers, if I could add that as an action item or make a motion to add that as an action item under. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll make that adjustment to the agenda. This would also be the time during the adjustments to the agenda, if there's anything within the consent agenda that you want pulled to take action on separately from the consent agenda, now would be the time. I do have one correction in the consent agenda, there are a couple of retirements listed in the staff updates with a retirement date of 6/12/2024, that should be 2025. But other than that, that would be the only adjustment. So next up, consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve that. Who was the second? Angela? All in favor? Who carries? Approval of the minutes from November 13th, 2024. Any discussion? Correction on the agenda, there is one item under new business, the nominations, if we can just make a note that the Anastasia and Adam made the motion and the second, that would be the only correction that I saw in the minutes. Any other comments or correction? All in favor to approve the minutes? Who carries? Public comment, do we have any public comment this evening? Real briefly, on my board chair report, I want to start by recognizing that Beth Day has been with the school board for two years now. She joined us in December of 2022. And Jennifer Mayo, 10 years on the school board as of this month. So, thank you both. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the board members that were able to attend the Legislative Summit on November 14th at SRTC. I did get some follow-up information to recap some of the information that was shared that night that I'll forward to you all, so that you can take a look. Next up, recognitions and celebrations. We're going to start with Jen Blair. So Danny, I'll turn it over to you and maybe you can do better than me.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here today. I'm very excited to introduce the 2024 Class A Women's Cross Country Coach of the Year. It is our own teacher, Jen Blair. Jen is also, yes. Jen is not only our cross-country coach, but she is also our outdoor track and field coach. She also is one of our coaches all summer long for our Trailblazers program, which is a youth dragonfield program. She is highly involved in always making sure that the culture and climate of our athletic programs is second to none. She is not an undefeated coach, she does not have any state champions, which I think is even more important, that she was nominated by her peers as the Women's Coach of the Year because of what she has done for our team. So Jen Blair.
Thank you for the kind recognition, Mr. Lawrence. And it's a pleasure to work with all the athletes in our district. We have fabulous families and kids. And it's my pleasure to work with them all fall, spring, summer, everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, next up is the MHS Field Hockey.
Hi, everybody. I'm Catherine Forni. I'm the field hockey coach. So I have a couple athletes that couldn't be here tonight, so I apologize for that. But I will pass on these certificates. So the Maine Field Hockey Association does two different state recognition. One is the academic all-state. And that's for seniors, they've got to be in the top 10% of their class or have a GPA of a 3.85 or better for three years. And I had four girls this year that satisfied that requirement. Lydia DeRocher, Celine Micho, Kenzie Nason, and Eliza Rogers. And then the Maine Field Hockey Association does an all-state athlete team. That's where coaches all across the state vote for these athletes. 63 girls were selected to this team, and two of them are from Massabesic. Eliza Rogers, she's a senior, she's committed to play at USM next year. And then Paige Stevenson is a junior who has committed to play at Central Michigan, which is a Division One school. And that's the first time we've had a Division One player, at least in my 14 years with the program. So that's pretty great. And I do also want to state about Paige Stevenson is that the National Coaches Association puts together an all-region team, and our region is Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire. And out of, there's 16 girls on that team, and Paige Stevenson made that team. So that's a pretty great honor as well. So thank you again for the recognition for the girls, and I'll pass these on. Appreciate it.
Last up is our Band and Chorus Regional Honors Festival and All-State Music Festival.
All right, good evening. So standing in for Ms. Farrington and Mr. HD, we have a host of students, which is really great to see a stack that's really large, going to three different types of festivals. So we have our regional festivals that have both band and chorus, and then we have all-state. I think what's really important to speak about in terms of these students and their accomplishments, they have to audition, so they have to try out for these different festivals. This isn't simply a, oh, I'd love to go, and we put a name down. So there's a lot that goes into this, not only in their practice and their training through their academic learning with Mr. HD and Ms. Farrington in our music program, but then also on their own, much like some of the student athletes you've heard about today. There's a lot of practice and training and rehearsal that goes on well beyond the school day in their homes. So I really appreciate the parents that let their children come home and sing at the top of their lungs or play an instrument that may not be the greatest sounding thing at first, but of course it gets better. I had some parents like that, so I really appreciate our folks supporting our students. So I do want to go through the list, but I would like to start things off with one brave student and her family who were able to brave the drive from West Newfield. So I hear there's a lot of fog out there. So Julia, if you would come up front here for just a moment. Julia Bryant is going to be performing in the Treble Choir in the Regional Honors Festival coming up in the spring of 2025, so congratulations. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Bryant for braving the joke. Thanks as well. So all right, next up, Madison Price is going to be singing in the Treble Choir at the Regional Honors Festival. Julia Docterman will be singing in the Treble Choir at the Regional Honors Festival. Zoe Spencer, also in the Treble Choir at the Regionals. Alexis Bullier in the Treble Choir at the Regionals and the All-State Festival. Sebastian Besson is going to be in the Mixed Choir for our Regional Honors Festival and All-State. Liam Fisher, the same, in the Mixed Choir at Regionals and All-State. Ryan Lee in the Mixed Choir at Regionals and All-State. So we have several of our students going on to the choir. Next up, we have Aiden Lane, who is going to be in the Mixed Choir in Regionals. Ashlyn Parent, also in Mixed Choir at Regionals. And Rowan Fisher at Mixed Choir and Regionals. And for the band, Logan Brunton will be at both the Regionals and All-State in band. Brianna Chaplin, the same thing, Regionals and All-State. Hannah Dearborn in the All-State Festival for band. Ian Tassinari at the Regional Honors Festival and All-State. Lydia Witham at the Regionals Honors Festival for band. Genevieve Roy at the Regionals for band. Evan Karen at the Regionals and All-State for band. And then last but not least, Nathan Valverde for All-State and Regionals. So congratulations to a lot of Massabesic students, yeah. You probably know this, but many of our students who are in our music program also double and triple in other ensembles, and those rehearsals are often on Wednesday nights. So it's a kind of a challenge, but they really appreciate the recognition. When we call them down first thing in the morning, they literally come running like little fishes, and it's really awesome to see them. So thanks for the recognition.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
I see Katie's not here, but we always take pictures, and Julia came out in a really nasty night. I don't know if someone can do that with Mr. Thurlow and her.
I just want to make a quick comment. It's really amazing to see how our kids are doing so well in both athletic and performing arts. It's a testament of the work being done at the high school to really transform the high school. The fact that a lot of students weren't here tonight is also a reflection of they all have really, really busy schedules. In a few minutes, you'll hear, in a little while, you'll hear from Mr. Lawrence. Two years ago, our high school athletic program, as an example, had 73 kids performing in the winter season. On November 19th, we had 176. That's just amazing. Same thing is happening within our music program. And our ROTC program is really growing, and you're going to hear some wonderful things. So I'm really pleased that you were able to come out tonight, Julia, and the Bryant family. And really want to thank the coaches that were here and Danny being here. We're going to hear from our other students in a little while, but keep up the great work. We're really proud of your continued progress and efforts to really make us all proud. So, nice work.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn things back over to Dr. Markey for the Superintendent's Report.
We're going to start off with Walker.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a safe ride here between the rain and the fog. I know there was a few minutes there where it felt like I was just driving through a cloud. So, hope everyone had a safe time getting here and also has a safe ride home. So after coming out of Thanksgiving break, there's just three weeks before Christmas break begins. And then after that, there are just three more weeks before the first semester of the school year has concluded. It always flies by, I can't believe that there is just three weeks left after Christmas break before the first semester is done already. The week of November 18th was International Education Week. At the high school, the four foreign exchange students hosted different events this week and presentations that let students experience some of their culture. For example, on Tuesday, students and staff were able to dance in a traditional Slovakian style. And it was fun for everyone who danced and everyone who watched as well. That same week, the high school launched their food drive competition, students collected non-perishable food items. And it was another great example of the school community coming together to support the broader Massabesic community. The high school also hosted its annual Thanksgiving chess tournament the same week, and all students and staff were invited to participate. There were trophies that were handed out for second and third place. On November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, the Mustang Theater put on their performance of Miss Holmes by Christopher M. Walsh. The reimagining of the classic Sherlock Holmes was a great success. And it was great for the students to be able to see their hard work over the last few weeks pay off. The Massabesic National Honor Society, or MHS NHS, as it's abbreviated, hosted their Ugly Sweater 5K on Sunday, December 1st. Over 70 people, including students, staff, and community members, came out to support the chapter and the event. And they ran a 5K around the high school and the surrounding roads. All of the money for the event, raised by the event, was used to purchase gifts for the giving trees throughout the district. On December 14th, Massabesic High School will host the Gingerbread Artist and Fair and Market. And on December 19th, the winter concert will occur. And the band members have been working really hard on learning this music, and they'll be finally able to share it with the community and their families. The first break of the school year occurred during the week of Thanksgiving. After coming in on Monday and Tuesday, students and staff had the rest of the weekend, the weekend off. And Christmas break will begin on December 21st and will conclude on January 22nd, giving 12 days of break, which is the longest vacation of the school year. Did I say 22nd? My apologies. I meant to say January 2nd. January 2nd is when it ends, not the 22nd. And after that, there are just three weeks before the second semester starts. Waldorf Elementary's Holiday Craft Fair happened on Saturday, December 7th. And there were over 40 vendors, raffles, face painting, pictures with Santa, and more, and it was a very fun holiday event. The Alfred Elementary, the Elf Extravaganza, will be occurring on Wednesday, December 11th. And Lyman Elementary Holiday Bingo will be occurring on the 18th of December at 5:30. And Shapley Memorial School is hosting two school-wide Spirit Days on December 13th and 20th. Massabesic Middle School will also be hosting a holiday book fair. And on December 17th, the school's chorus will be hosting their winter concert. The winter sports preseason is coming to an end, and games will be starting soon. The first basketball games were on December 6th. And other sports matchups are beginning this time as well. So since this is the last meeting before the holiday break, which does not end January 22nd, I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and a Happy New Years. Thank you.
Thank you, Walker. I'm going to try to be very brief with my report because I know we have a lot to cover. I do want to give special thanks to Colin Walsh and our business office for their work in working with our audit firm to prepare our FY 2024 audit. And you'll hear more information about that this evening. I was going to thank folks for attending the Legislative Update, but that was covered. I do want to share that I'm going to be serving on a committee with the State Board of Education, as well as members of selected superintendents throughout the state on a committee that's going to be looking at superintendent agreements. I have a strong bias against superintendent agreements because I think it really impacts our district adversely. So I'll be participating in our first meeting, will be on the 19th. And then later that afternoon or evening, I'm looking forward to going to that concert at the high school. Want to share some really good news. Schools throughout the state of Maine typically look to, there are a number of different ratings that are out there for schools. And the one that's most commonly cited is the US News and World Report's rankings of schools. And the vast majority of that information is derived by Department of Education metrics and data. And so, not to go into all the different methodologies, but I'm pleased to share that all of our schools are moving up in those rankings. Again, rankings are nothing to be defined by, but we really showed some tremendous gains across the board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. At the elementary level, we have, all five of our schools are in the top third in the rankings. And we actually have two schools that were recognized for pretty significant rankings. Shapley Memorial, out of the 469 elementary schools in the state of Maine, was ranked number six and also ranked number one in York County. And Lyman was ranked fourth in York County and 24th in the state. So we've seen across the board that our schools are really moving in a nice direction. At the middle school level, where middle school rankings include any schools that educate middle-level students, so they could be also educating elementary students. So there certainly aren't 334 middle schools in the state of Maine, but there are 334 schools that educate middle-school-level kids. So our middle school performed in the top 15% of all schools that educate students at the middle school level. And then the high school's a little more unique. They rank the first 52 schools, and then they clump the next big chunk from 53 to 105, I believe it is. And then they don't give ratings to the latter. So right now, we're in that middle group. And I can see us moving up in those rankings. So I just want to draw attention to that because it's nice to have schools that are being recognized for really making some nice gains. And I think that's part of the real charge that you all have as board members is supporting the educational product that we're putting forth. I do think that we have a great deal of work still to do. But those are the types of rankings that we do want to look at because when people do move into communities, they do look at rankings of schools. And it could tip the scale as they're kind of reviewing areas of interest. So, just want to share that. That's all I have because I know we have a number of presentations this evening. And I too would like to wish you all a nice holiday break if I don't see you prior to heading into break.
Thank you. Any questions, Mark?
Just a couple tonight. I'm really excited about those stats, too. My question is, in terms of informing instruction, what's happening at Shapley? I don't want to say what's happening at Shapley that isn't happening at other elementary schools, but what's happening at Shapley that we can export to our other elementary schools? I mean, obviously, they're having great success. So how do we use their success and identify what it is that's making them successful so that we can share that with all the elementary schools? So, one question.
I think we are actually pretty in line across all of our elementaries. Our PLC work, professional learning community work, is consistent across all of our elementary schools. Our administrators meet on a regular basis every Wednesday. We met this morning. I don't think that there's anything significantly different. Part of it is the methodology of the ratings. So when you have a small cohort, you actually can go way up or way down very quickly when they're looking at specific data, right? Not to put it into a sports analogy, but I will. There are some years where you might have a 6'8" kid on your basketball team that helps. When you're in a small cohort, you can actually have some of that. So we have to be cautious of over-inflating any one particular year. And we want to look at it with trends over time. And we do have pockets where, in every one of our schools, elementary schools, the success on state tests vary by grade level. So you could have really high scores in, say, grade two, and you could have the lowest scores in grade three. So they take that all into account. I think our staff across all of our elementary schools, as well as the middle school and high school, they're working with the data that we have and really looking at, how do we ensure that what we're presenting to kids is what they need to know to be successful in school as a whole? And also be able to achieve on those assessments? And that was really a lot of the work that happened, for example, on November 5th. We did a lot of work around assessments. And then really starting to have a lot of additional conversation so that we're not teaching to the test, but we're preparing kids to do, to show what they know on those assessments. I think part of the ratings, though, also was generated from what individuals might put into surveys and things on the websites themselves that rank. So as satisfaction increases, there are some other elements that make it hard for some of our schools. Diversity is one of the elements of ratings. So if you don't actually have a lot of diversity, you actually get ranked down on those. So.
So it's a more nuanced discussion.
There's a lot around the methodology. But I think as a general principle, if we could get our high school into the top 50, which I think is really our goal, and then go from there, we continue to move our middle school forward. And then ultimately, if we could have all of our elementary schools on a regular basis being ranked in the top 100. And then, there were some really strong schools that I never would have envisioned that we'd be passing at this point on these particular ratings. There are numbers of different ratings, and some of our schools are ranked, depending on the ranking, like Nietzsche is another one that's pretty common. Great Schools is another one that's pretty common. Shapley was ranked number one. They might be ranked number three on one of the other scales for our district. Alfred might have been ranked number three on the US News and World Report, but in some of our other rating scales, they're ranked number one. So we want to look at it across a bunch. But I wanted to share this particular one because it's the one that's most commonly cited by realtors and by schools when they're reporting how they're doing.
And just two other questions, not for answers tonight, but just to bring it forward. Almost to a person, our principals all said that one of the greatest challenges was lack of substitutes. And I would like to see us, you as administrators, but ultimately as a school board, have a discussion about how we keep and increase our substitutes. And one quick thought of mine is that money is not the solution to every problem, but certainly if you paid more, you might attract more substitutes. And so the second question is, I know we're now four months into the school year. We originally budgeted. We originally budgeted for a large number of positions that have yet to be filled. And so even if we were to fill every position today, we should have four months' worth of their salaries in the budget. So my question is, how much money is that? And again, you may not have those numbers off the top of your head. And what can we do with that money? Is that ultimately a pool of money that could be used to increase subpay or to use for other purposes?
We'll be adjusting subpay after the new year, I believe, for a variety of reasons. I think that you're right, money is not the final determiner. We certainly want to have subs. I think through negotiations, there are some other ways of incentivizing staff and attendance. And we did a little bit of that through the ed tech negotiations. There's a supplement related to when they're supporting in different ways. But sub-salary is an area that we do have to address. And Colin and I have talked about that. As far as the actual expenditure, I would need to look more closely at that and ask Colin to provide that at our next meeting.
Yeah, I would think it'd be, at this point, a significant amount of money that has been budgeted, but isn't going to, well, obviously isn't going to be spent because we didn't have those employees for the last four months.
Yeah, I... We're not as short on positions as one might think. We're short on subs, so those are a little different. So we don't have a lot of open positions, per se. And we're working through our staff FTEs, but we can get that information for you.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add to the conversation. I was discussing these standings and these stats and this information in public the other day with an educator. And that individual was really, really pleased to hear that information. They don't teach in this district, but they live in it. And the comment that was made was, this is a reflection on the quality of teachers, the quality of leadership, our principals, and the quality of leadership starts right at the very top. They made that comment that we were fortunate to have leadership from the top down and made the comment that if there was anyone that was going to lead this district forward and even improve upon these numbers, which are great, that it was Dr. Markey. That's the sort of opinion that a lot of folks have out in our district. And I think we should note that here as a board, that we appreciate hearing that sort of information. But there's a reason you're sharing it. You're sharing it because you're leading this district in a direction that we need to go. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, next up, standing committees, finance, building, and maintenance. Dominic.
So we met tonight before this meeting. The majority of our meeting was the presentation from the auditors. They are close to wrapping up the audit for the prior year. Extremely good report from the auditors. We are very fiscally responsible. We were able to add about $581,000 to the fund balance. And we had a conversation about how to use the fund balance, how to manage that properly. So going forward, we are hoping to do some strategies on how to manage that better. And they are expecting to finalize the audit, I believe, sometime in the middle of January. So hopefully, we'll have that final report then. Line School was given a donation of $1,004 from Alfpacka Meadows Farm as a donation. We approved that. We were supposed to have a town meeting with the six-town select board today in regards to the upcoming budget, but that was canceled and will be rescheduled. Everything else, the only project left with Esser is the modular at the high school, which is close to being finished. And then that will be ready to be used. Our next meeting is January 8th at 5:30 here at the East Building.
Thank you. Any questions for Dominic? Next up, curriculum. Anastasia.
We met last night. We discussed PE, PG, which is every district in Maine needs to develop their own system of professional evaluation and professional growth. We got an overview from Dr. Doyle and Ms. Bellevant, thank you. I drew a blank on what they did, how the process works. Each teacher's on a three-year cycle. Each cycle has a different aspect. Praise, probe, and polish a few times a year. Evaluations have formal evaluations. Mrs. Bellevant gave us a handout of the in-task standards, which is what they base all their goals on. We also got a review of what the professional development was on November 5th for the K through eight. They had different breakout sessions throughout the course of the day. And they did a survey with the staff to see how the staff enjoyed that breakout sessions, and it went over very well. Our next meeting is January 14th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Anastasia on curriculum? Human Resources. Anastasia.
We met November 21st. We worked on finalizing the two flyers that we'll review later, so I'm not going to discuss that. We discussed meeting with Drummond and Woodson prior to our negotiations that start next year with the teachers. We looked at scheduled dates for the negotiations. And our next meeting in December will be canceled. We will meet on January 16th at 6:00 PM. But the negotiations HR committee will meet on January 6th at 5:30 PM with our legal.
Any questions for Anastasia on HR? Now, that one was HR. She did curriculum, then she did HR.
That's what happens when you joke.
No, usually it's me, so I don't blame you for questioning it. Next up, policy. We met last week. We finished review of the J policies, which we had been reviewing for over a year. And we started in on the K policies, which is school, community, and home relations. We also touched base on a couple of the E policies that had come through the cycle as well. So I have a handful that will be coming forward for a first read this evening. But other than that, everything moved through with some slight changes to language for consistency and MSMA recommendations, but nothing substantive. Our next policy meeting is January 7th at 6:00 PM. Any questions on policy? PR tech, Suzanne. Can you hit your mic, please?
The Public Relations Technology Committee met on November 19th. And we got an update from Director Lawrence. And he is continuing to work hard on the athletic program, thank you, and along with improving the facilities in various ways. And the winter season has started. And as mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have our athletes, 176 high school athletes signed up as of November 19th. And our middle school winter sport numbers are also growing. And we also had an update from Mr. Code on the Massapeseq Adult Community and Education. And we had eight students have graduated from the program, and four were from the York County Jail, and that program is going very well. Our driver education program has begun, and there's been 43 students enrolled. And also Eleanor, who is part of the adult administration, received the Maine Adult Education Advisor Award. So congratulations to her. And also, we had a recap of the career fair that happened. I attended that. It went really, really well. It was very professional, and it really prepped our high school students. I was very pleased. And I had written a summary for Dr. Doyle to share to the committee. And that we did get feedback from the businesses on how we could do better and what their opinion on how they could connect with the students for possible employment or training or career exploration. And that definitely an interest in Stato opportunities were some of the key takeaways. And there were 60 vendors that attended that, so it was very successful. And that is the end of my summary. Our next meeting is on December 17th, next week, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Suzanne? Transportation and safety, Jen.
We met on November 26th. Colin gave a budget update, said that not much had changed since the last meeting. Salaries and benefits are still in line. Labor-wise, going well. There's been no major repairs needed. Insurance is paid at the beginning of the year, and that came in under budget. And right now, there's no concerns with fuel. Richie gave a transportation update, said that staff is maintaining. Some have been out with injuries. They're still searching for a mechanic. But so far, bus and van fleets are doing well. Maintenance has mostly been in-house. If it's a warranty issue, that gets sent out. They're looking into a new bus routing tracking software. May cost a little bit more money, but it should have faster GPS tracking and easier updates. In regards to the electric buses, the company had wanted to know why we opted to not go through with getting three more buses, and they reached out and they met with Colin remotely. And he said that was a good discussion. This current CDL class is going to be wrapping up in January. There's two in the class, and one has already agreed to do full-time for the district, so that'll be great. And all of the 2024 fiscal year buses have been received and are in use. And the next meeting is January 28th.
Thank you. Any questions for Jen? All right, old business, we have none. New business, state of schools report, NJROTC. Nah, I know.
Good evening. For those I haven't met, my name is Doug Howell. This is my third year teaching at Massapeseq. When I first met the school board three years ago, as Dr. Markey said, we were in a much different state, just coming off, coming back into full-time classroom, full-time engagement between students and teachers. We had a retirement, my predecessor. We had all the equipment, but no real turnover. That became an opportunity, the gentleman here behind me, to basically reinvent our unit. So with Chief Lip and 51 of their classmates this year, that is in progress with more joining. There are three more who have indicated they want to join us just for Massapeseq, and they will be doing so at the very beginning of spring semester. We put together just a quick review of the dates, the things that this unit has done since the 3rd of September. And if you flip to the second page, still to come, this Saturday is Reads Across America in two different locations, Springville and Meeting House Hill Cemetery. And we have cadets who will be laying reads at both locations. And I will be up at Meeting House Hill. That evening, down at Sandra Performing Center, United States Air Force Heritage of America Band is coming. They asked us to provide their color guard. So Chief Lip will meet them down there to provide their color guard. Folks, that's become typical. I love saying that. If you see a number of these dates on the front, things that have already occurred, you'll see a number of events happened on the same day. Freiburg Fair, in the morning, the unit marched. Our color guard was invited to lead the entire grand parade of the Freiburg Fair. That evening, Brunswick Navy League sponsors a Navy ball, a banquet, if you will. Very traditional, all the services have it. And they invited age-old tradition with this unit. Our kids come up and provide color guard for that event. Same kids that marched in the parade that morning. So we have Dan Harriman, Dakota Simon, and Jonathan Gray, who graciously, Dr. Markey and I had spoken. And we had a number of volunteers who wanted to let you all know what the unit has done for them, why they are in. And hopefully, if we're doing it well, their eloquence will tell the story better than mine can. If you all indulge me, I'd like to start with Daniel.
Good evening. I'm Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade, Daniel Harriman. This is my third year in the unit. Currently, I do everything, or do some things, from leading our varsity drill team to some admin work, helping with many different groups that we have within the unit. I think one thing that I like about the unit is we've been doing stuff since before the bell rang on freshman day at the high school. Many of us were there early so we could help those incoming freshmen as they come in and see the new school, just trying to provide a friendly face. The two cadets with me, Cadet Seaman Simon and Cadet Seaman Apprentice Gray, are both NS1s in our unit, so they're both freshmen this year. And we've seen a lot of freshmen stepping up. We had a few more who were going to come, but weather did get in the way of that. So I'd like to introduce Cadet Simon.
Good evening, everybody. Like Dan said, I'm Cadet Seaman Simon. And I really like the unit. I joined because I heard Navy Junior Officer Reserve Training Corps, and I went, ooh, Navy. I like the military. And I stayed because I really liked the dynamic. I like how everybody gets along. I like how everything works out, and that's kind of why I'm here. I like to participate. I like to help out where I can. And I stepped up, just like Dan said. Since September 3rd, we've done a lot of things, like Captain mentioned. We went to basic leadership training, which is just more or less to kind of kick you in the right direction at the very start of the year and get your whole NJROTC career jump-started. And I attended, and yeah, it was more or less that. It was a great event. We started off very well. Other notable events since then, we went to a few drill competitions. We did pretty well there. We placed in a few of them, especially NS1 drill. And then we had our area manager inspection, which also went very well. It was a very good time. We had the area one manager, Mr. Gregory Washington, come over. And yeah, it was a fun time. We had our pass review. And I'm very, very happy with the unit. I'm very glad that I joined.
My name is Jonathan Gray. I personally joined the unit because I didn't know much about it. So far, I can say I did not regret that choice at all. It's been really fun. I've made new friends, met great teachers, and there's a lot of fun events. As Dakota said, we've done AMI, drill comps. All of it has been fun and inspiring. If I could find more people, I'd tell them, "Join." Because ROTC doesn't shape you. You shape it. You make it fun. Without people, we wouldn't be here right now. And I don't really think there is much more I can say because Dakota's taken much of it. But still, it's still really fun, and I definitely enjoy it. I think other people should, too.
Yes. One more thing. He touched on, Dakota and Gray both touched on our drill competition. Just this past Saturday, our All-Navy New England Drill League hosted its final competition, which ended our major drill season. And we were only 20 points away from the third place, so we were in fourth. And but from the past few years, our numbers have gone up. And I'm sure that by next year, we can be placing second or third, and hopefully even first. Because we have been putting in a lot of work. We have a lot of new freshmen in our NS1. Because we have been putting in a lot of work. We have a lot of new freshmen in our NS1s who are stepping up and making it so cadet officers can take some more time to work on other things that can help improve our scores and not just running everything in the unit, which is great help. And I see the unit going many more places and hopefully getting more trophies like this one's right outside the door.
Jonathan, one of our freshmen, made an extremely powerful point. It deserves reiteration. This unit is student-run. Chief Lip and I provide the resources, provide the background, give them the boundaries. The ball is theirs to play. And they played it. So the teams that they were doing drill, which is our varsity sport, a true varsity sport, they were competing against very well-established units. Freshmen and sophomores make up over 94% of our unit. As our numbers improve, the balance will grow. But for right now, a lot of energy in our first two years. They're competing against juniors and seniors, third-year and fourth-year cadets, who have done this straight in one school, a wonderful unit. Their kids will come in an hour before school begins every day of the week. They came within 20 points of them. They did that. They do it. Madam Chair and Dr. Markey would like to finish by reiterating another point, one not often said, but I think it deserves to be said here. All that we can do in this unit, and it is special, is because of a deep foundation of support. It begins with you all. It begins with the six communities here, who've made their support of us very clear. It continues very strongly consistently through the district staff, the business office, and the transportation department. We're visiting them and talking with them two or three times a week, guaranteed, or this would not be possible. Period. Other units, who well-established, do many good things. They don't have what we have. And it isn't just our wonderful kids. It isn't just, I'm blessed with Chief Lip and the job that I love too. It's because the command climate, as we say in the Navy, within the district, within the high school, the cooperation within the departments is second to none. I've met the other schools. They're great. You're better. And thank you.
I'd like to make a brief comment. And I'm sure some board members may as well. So last week, I actually met with the area manager, who oversees the direct inspection of 29 units. And he spoke so glowingly of our unit. Unfortunately, Chief Lip could not be with us tonight because he's taking advanced courses, because he really is working towards that, and we're really supporting him for that. So he was disappointed that he couldn't be here. The area manager could not have spoken more glowingly about our program, and spoke in specific to the word leadership and the fact that the kids are truly the leaders of this program, who are then guided by instructors. And then, in summary, the area manager said unequivocally, I think that's the way you'd say it, that the two teachers were the best that he's come into contact with, and in particular, Captain Howell. So we really value and appreciate everything you're doing, because it's a lifetime experience for these kids. And when they wear the uniforms, they wear them with pride, and it starts with you as a leader. So thank you. And Captain Howell doesn't know this, but we'll probably have him come back at our next meeting, because there's a proposal that they'd like to share that I really think the board should weigh in on. And I'll have a recommendation for you around marksmanship as kids compete in the region. But I think it does require some board understanding.
I have a question for our young lieutenant before he leaves. Could you tell us what the drill competitions entail? What do you guys have to go through?
So this year, we competed in four competitions. One of them, we hosted, but the other three were away. They entail most times getting to the school around 4:00, 4:30 in the morning. We're hopping on a bus going down to either Massachusetts or Rhode Island. Where we arrive, we start with an academic exam for our academic team. And then we go into a selection of drill events. So we have our color guard team. We have our NS1 drill team, which is all freshmen or first-years in the program, who is also commanded by a first-year in the program. And then we have our armed drill team, which we is commanded usually by a more senior cadet. And everybody is carrying some of our drill rifles in the platoon. We have our unarmed drill platoon, which is just regular marching, some of the drill we are practicing every week as we prepare for it. We have a drill knockout, which is a more fun activity, which is more basic drill, but it's more strict. The judges are focusing on the small aspects of everything. That's where you'll see some of our younger cadets, who really focus on being very accurate with their movements. That's where we'll see them excel really, really well. Then we go into our physical fitness portion of it, which includes two minutes of push-ups, sit-ups, and then a one-mile run. And it's always a great time. We're always having fun cheering for each other. So this year, we had one in Massabesic, which we were hosting. We had one in Quabin, one in Oxford, and then one in Coventry, which was our last one this past weekend, which we did an overnight, which involved a tour at Newport Naval Station, right in Rhode Island, right over, right near the high school, which allowed us to get up a few hours later, hopefully preparing ourselves a little bit better. But it was also a great experience for us. The tour we got of the damage control and firefighting was actually given to us by a former cadet and alumni at Massabesic High School, which is, I think was great to show a bunch of our cadets to say, hey, this is what you could be doing. It really came full circle, and it was a great opportunity to have.
Sounds quite demanding, and I commend you. Do you aspire to military service after the high school?
I'm not planning on going into military service. I'm looking at emergency medicine or nursing, which could entail going into military as NHS or something, or health service. But I think I'm more, I'm planning on staying civilian side of things. But yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, my son is in the unit, and he has, he talks about it all the time. He absolutely loves it. I've never seen someone so, he's so shy. He doesn't talk to anyone, ever. And he has taken on a leadership role this year, which is shocking to me. He skips work, which he's always been like really dedicated to work, and he skips work to, you know, make sure, takes time off. He's on the academic team, and absolutely has loved every minute of, and he's trying to do every event, and he's really enjoying it. So I just want to make that, no, I mean, I've told you a million times, I feel like, but I wanted to make it known to everybody that he loves being in the unit, and he loves the course and all the work involved in it. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much for coming in and being here. Watching the growth of this program over the last couple of years has been astounding. So I can't wait to see what the next couple of years brings. So thank you for coming in. And if you want to head home, by all means, thank you. All right. Next up, RSC 57 Athletics.
That is going to be very difficult to follow. So thank you for that. I tend to be long-winded at these, so I apologize for looking down at my notes quite a bit, but that'll keep me in less than half an hour of time. So thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Danny Lawrence, and I am the middle school and high school athletic director. I'd like to begin this evening by speaking to the breadth of our athletic programming. Often athletics is spotlighted by sporting events, wins and losses, or resource availability, which does not always accurately reflect the complexity of our department. I'm fortunate to have my own athletics team of an administrative assistant, a middle school athletic liaison, and two athletic trainers in conjunction with main health. We have a handful of regular staff that work with us in announcing, scoring, running the clock, and scoreboard. Together, we work with 81 paid coaches and a multitude of volunteers. This fall, we oversaw 374 student athletes and facilitated 83 home contests, two regional championships, and two playoff games. In the fall season, we facilitated 20 different teams or opportunities. And for the winter, we provide 22 different teams, as well as an after-school lifting program at the high school. Daily, our department works to schedule and provide transportation. We conduct payroll, hiring, evaluations, and district onboarding. We sweep the floors, change the lights, pick up trash, and at times, do the laundry. We manage the athletics website, social media, and registration platform. We check eligibility. We work weekends, nights, and holidays to provide opportunities for our students and greater community. And believe it or not, every now and then, we deal with disgruntled parents. It is an increasingly dynamic role, and I have been fortunate to have support of my department members and our district's administration. I would now like to address a few of the areas of our strategic plan that our department has worked to achieve. To begin, we have put significant effort in creating systems of success for our department, and have educated our staff on best practices, as well as provided resources for the development of our coaches, not only at the high school, but at the middle school as well. It's my belief that curriculum mapping is the key to foundational success, as well as longevity within our programs. And our middle school liaison, Anna P. Reinan, has been instrumental in this process. We have done this in part through our first annual coaches summit that we offered this past June, where we brought in strength and conditioning coaches from the University of New England, among others, for a day of professional development. We have provided all head coaches one of my favorite resources, Coaching Better Every Season by Wade Gilbert. We conducted preseason presentation before-season with the coaching staff to discuss and educate on new policies, procedures, and best practices. These types of actions not only meet Focus Area 2 of our strategic plan, but provide better instruction and opportunities for our athletes and community members. Examples of these efforts are included in your packets. All high school athletics teams must begin the season with a program handbook. We've also streamlined communication using Team App. An example is also in your packet. Another common practice is weekly newsletters and/or emails sent to parents and community. These actions help to unify our athletic department and create consistency and continuity for our multi-sport athletes and families. We implemented our first annual COLT Camp Connections Opportunities Leadership Training to help our incoming eighth graders transition into high school athletics just prior to the beginning of our preseason sports this past fall. These types of systems and programmatic philosophy have allowed us to bring on three coaches from Noble, two of which have taken full-time roles in the districts from coaching, a coach from Sanford and a coach from Scarborough, as well as two coaches of the year from Massabesic in one calendar year. In observance of Focus Area 4 of our strategic plan, we spent the summer updating our practice facilities, including nets, goals, track protectors, practice balls, watering stations, and developed an additional game field at the high school. We have worked to balance our uniform rotation to meet Title IX compliance, and have created continuity across programs in resource allocation. My training department and I spent the summer creating a new athletic training center at the high school. This training center not only offers our student athletes better care and support and treatment, it also creates more storage and organization for our physical education department and wrestling and volleyball teams. My family and I painted and updated the concession stand, and we worked to improve the branding of our venues to increase participant pride and sense of community. Most importantly, in reference to Focus Area 1, we have seen a 64.4% increase in fall high school participation since 2022, and 141% increase in high school winter athletic participation since 2022, based on data we could find. And we have introduced multiple new opportunities for our athletes, including after-school open gym year-round, women's-only lifting sessions, women's wrestling team, and a middle school indoor track and field program. Once again, I would like to thank my administration team and central office supports, as well as the school board, for the continued support in developing and promoting our interscholastic athletic program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Danny? Mark?
I just Googled your book, and it looks amazing. You give it to every coach?
We give it to every head coach currently.
I think that, just from the four reviews I read while you were talking, multitasking, that sounds like a great idea. I've asked this question of every principal, and obviously you've kind of fit the bill of running a department. Are there any, what are the challenges you have that we, as a board, could help you with?
The board and administration supports me completely, and I have absolutely no challenges in our department. No. I think, I mean, honestly, I have great role models. I was kind of commenting earlier in a meeting with Mr. Thurlow. I now carry a little notebook, because I've seen Dr. Markey and Dr. Doyle and Mr. Thurlow all carrying those. So I'm learning from my administrators, who I think do a fantastic job. I think I need to continue doing that, because time management is difficult. It's a very complex job, and it takes a lot of hours to kind of make it work. I'm uncomfortable with mediocrity. So I think I just need to figure out how to manage all of it and meet the goals that I set for our programming. And I know that our kids have. Everyone here wants to create great opportunities. It's just how can we do that? And long-term plans don't always fit for me. I like to get things done. So I think that's really what I'm working on, and that's more of an independent thing. From the school board and Central Office, I have great support. I think I feel the constraints of staffing limitations, like everyone else does. That's not an easy fix. You know, we were down seven and a half custodians at one point. You know, everyone feels that. If we're missing our head of grounds, that impacts me significantly. So those type of things, I think we all just kind of work together and are doing the best that we can with what we have. I'd like to not fill them up, though. That would be the key.
What he didn't say as an item of support, folks typically challenge athletics more than any other element of our program. And I really want to say this very clearly and ask for your support. I don't believe that we could have been any luckier than we were or fortunate than to hire Danny. Danny is more committed than any AD I've ever worked with, that I've ever, as an athlete, as a coach, and as an administrator. I think he's growing into the position. I can't even imagine where we'll be in the future, given his leadership and his commitment to excellence and support. The connections he's having with kids at the freshman level, I think is important, building a systemic approach and a developmental approach, and his expectations for coaching, and evaluations that have never been done for coaches in the past, to my knowledge, in this district. So I think what he really needs from you all is if you have people that want to complain about athletics, give him an opportunity, or us, an opportunity to explain. Because, simply because someone's complaining doesn't mean it's not actually what's best for the district. And if anyone's been challenged over the past 16 months in this district, 17 months, Danny's been challenged more than anyone else, and he's done it with grace and with dignity. And we need to support him, because our programs are improving because of him. We're really lucky to have you. So thank you.
Thank you.
I could be jumping ahead, but I see in the backup, are we going to talk about, he's got something in the backup, about wrestling? For a field trip and for...
Oh, in the consent agenda?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, just kidding. Thanks. Did we approve that already?
Yes.
Nope, I don't. I don't have any questions. I wanted to make sure that we addressed it. I must have missed it.
Dan, I just wanted to mention, I have the opportunity to interact with Anna on occasion, and she's, she really is, we need to recognize her. She does a phenomenal job at the middle school.
I agree.
It's a great selection, and she's just, I can envision her growing into your job at some point, or beyond.
That's the goal.
Yes. So just a shout-out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My son is young, so we've only experienced the football program for a few years. This year, not. Amazing. But I work with some Whitman who have sons that are high school's age, at high schools closer to Portland. And they say, oh my God, Mustang Nation, when they hear from RSC When they hear from RSU fifty-seven, they're like, everyone almost fears you guys. So just let you know that you're doing an amazing job, and everyone talks about what a great program, the athletic program here is RSU fifty-seven, how lucky we are. So, great job.
That's where we want to be. Thank you.
Any other questions? What was the name of that book again?
Coaching Better Every Season by Wade Gilbert. Super easy read. Yeah, there's a little picture there. And much of the coaching handbooks or team handbooks, player handbooks, I offered two examples here, but every one of our varsity programs must have one of those in place. That's part of my requirements for them and expectations. A lot of that structure is based off of best practices through Wade Gilbert and many of the coaching philosophies that he has put in place. I thought fifteen years ago, I wish someone told me some of this stuff when I started coaching. So my goal is to give our coaches that information, and hopefully, we can keep them here and make their job easier because it is a very difficult job to coach.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, review of the budget process. Mr. Walsh.
Don't start the clock yet. Give me a chance to... Those of you who, that isn't the agenda? On the screen. It is a big packet, and I'm not going through every single slide. The budget process is determined by the Finance Committee of the Board. The Finance Committee meets in the fall and determines what the process is to be used from January until April and to develop the annual budget. So we're going to talk just briefly. This budget process is very similar to last year's budget development. So for those who are new, this may be very helpful. For those who have been on the board for a little bit, this may be a refresher for you. The committee did look at the process and decided that the current process is working really efficiently and effectively in meeting the needs of the board, the district, and the community, and therefore didn't really need a lot of revision or adjustment. So the first two pages, Shane, if you can go to page two, bottom right-hand corner is where the page numbers are. It's somewhat faint, but this just starts the overall in the view of what the budget looks like. So the first, on Pages Two, and then Shane, the next page on Page Three, really gives you an overview in chronological order. Some overlaps, but some doesn't. Yes, it's very faint. It didn't come out on the copy nearly, nearly where I thought it was. No, it's not our fault. It came out extremely faint when it photocopied. So the overview really, subtract that, Dominic, from the seven minutes. So these first two pages are really, in somewhat chronological order, the way in which the budget develops from start to finish. On the next page, Shane, we really talk about who's involved. And in these bullets, it really talks about, the development is an integrated approach. It is not done in a vacuum. It's not done in one area with just Finance Committee. It involves a whole group of folks, the community. And you say, well, where's the community involvement? The community involvement is where the community wants it to be. Finance Committee meets just about every Wednesday during budget season. Those meetings are open to the public. We have a public forum in March. We have public budget meetings. We have the website. We have distribution of information. We meet with selectmen. There are a lot of opportunities for the community, as well as administration, staff, and others, to have input into the budget and the budget development. A lot of times, we hear, well, the budget meeting is where the public comes. If we really want an integrated approach that aligns with the strategic plan, then the community is invited and welcomed at all of the meetings, just like school board meetings, to be part of and parcel of that process. And that is important, is providing that opportunity for the public to participate in the process. Going to the next page, the timeline. Timeline always seems long. We've started the budget process internally in the business office in October, November. We're continuing to work. It really takes full force right after New Year's. Finance will be meeting January eighth. They will meet every week except for holidays or vacation week, and they will be developing the budget to bring to the board. The timeline, they've already established. It is on the website. There is a 2025-26 budget tab on the website. That budget, with all the meetings, where they're located, the times, and what the presentations will be, are there. Finance Committee minutes and agendas are also sent out, but anyone who's interested in the timeline, that is there. May is the budget meeting, early May. So the budget really goes backwards. The validation referendum in this district has always been on statewide voting day, which is the second Tuesday in June. Then the budget meeting is determined from there to give enough time between budget meeting and the validation for the public to review and vote. Especially absentee voting has increased significantly, so that's time for the public to have that information. And then from January until mid-April, when the school board approves the budget, is the timeline. Next page, Shane. Gathering the information comes from a huge variety of sources. I'm not going to read all of this to you. You can read it. It is not done, again, like I said in the beginning, in a vacuum. There are administrators, there are staff, there are departments that are all providing input during this process. It happens over a period of time. So gathering the information, assimilating the information, adjusting information, bringing it forward to the committee, Finance Committee asking questions, going back with the answers, and then talking more about it, is all part of the process of information gathering. On the next page, this is where Finance really goes in and says, okay, where are we at? Steve and Amanda will work very directly with administrators and department leaders on staffing. Where is the staffing? Where do we need staffing? What programs do we need? How do we fund those programs? How do we fund the staffing in order to accomplish those goals? Departmental-wise, operationally, is the same structure. What's the strategic plan? Where do we need to have our operations be in improvements? How do we meet those needs? And then where does that fall in the budget process? Next page. We've talked about a timeline. We've talked about the people. We've talked about who's involved, over what timeframe they're involved, and how we gather the information. So you've seen all of these different pieces, whether it's staffing or supplies and the timeline, then it's all brought together into an overall budget. So the overall budget includes state subsidy funding. It includes where are we at with staffing? Where are we at with collective bargaining agreements? What's the economy? How are prices going for supplies, professional services, and other needs? And how does that all come into the overall budget? So with a district that's as spread out as we are, as large as we are, with the number of staff that we have, this is a real task. This takes time to bring this all together. Hence the timeline and why it occurs over weeks and weeks and months. As part of formulating that, once the subsidy, on the next page, Shane, is received, so we have the revenue side, which is primarily state subsidy and local tax dollars, and the expenditure side of where is the money being spent. Once that's received, then the process for the budget at that point is, okay, we have the revenue, we have the expenditures. What does that look like? Does that meet the needs? What needs aren't being met in the budget? What does that look like to the taxpayers in the community for a tax increase? And where is the balance in developing the tax base, as well as the needs of the district, both for that budget year, but also ensuring that you're putting the district in a good position for the future as well? On the next page, once the budget is formulated, then it's presented out of Finance Committee. Finance Committee will vote on a budget to bring to the school board. In the timeline, it shows that the school board would then review and approve a budget in its first meeting in April. Why that meeting? Because in order to meet printing and other deadlines for budget meeting in early May and then a validation referendum in the second Tuesday in June, that's where the school board needs to meet. So the Finance Committee is focusing on that through its entire process to ensure that it's meeting those goals and deadlines, so that you, as a school board, have the time and ability to review that budget and to vote on it. Because the budget cannot move forward to the public until the school board votes on it. On the next page is the communication and the voting on that budget, and I've mentioned most of this already. We do have a two-step process for RSU fifty-seven, as most school districts do, of the budget meeting and then the validation referendum. And then the next page talks about implementing the budget and monitoring the budget, which is the role of myself, the superintendent, and the Finance Committee, to ensure that whatever budget is approved is then monitored, kept up to date, and ensuring that we're meeting what the voters voted on and being in compliance with that. That is it for the budget process. Are there questions or things that I can answer for you?
Amy?
I just had one quick question. Do you foresee the state formula changing anytime in the near future to better support districts like ours or no?
So the question of the state subsidy formula, there is an evaluation being done by a group right now that the state and legislative action forced to happen. That review is in process with an expected release date of March. There are limitations within what that group, which is called MEPRI, is currently reviewing. They aren't reviewing the entire formula from soup to nuts to revamp the whole thing. The short answer is I don't expect any significant changes to the funding formula in the near term, meaning the next year to two years. Where that study comes out and where the legislature acts after that, and what actions it takes to continue to move evaluation of the subsidy formula forward, is unknown. But I think we're still several years away from any potential change to the funding formula based upon that, in my opinion.
I think it's worth noting again that last budget vote, we saw a good ten percent drop in support for the budget, and times are tough. I think it goes without saying, and I know you and Dominic and the other committee members do a good job, but I'm concerned that we be as fiscally responsible and watch our dollars as best we can, because I would hate to see that support erode even further.
Great.
Any other questions for Colin? Comments? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have first read of some policies. I'll quickly review the changes that were made, and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. So JRA, Student Education Records and Information, these changes were in alignment with MSMA recommendations in the sections discussing designation of law enforcement unit and health or safety emergency. JRA-dash-E, Notification of Rights Under FERPA, again, in alignment with MSMA recommendations. We also did some cleanup and clarification throughout the policy. KBF, Parent Involvement with Title I School Board Level Involvement. So MSMA recommendations and law changes influenced these adjustments. So the two KBF policies outline Title I parent involvement at the parent district and school levels. So additional information and guidelines dictating what will be included in the school-parent compact, as well as specific requirements for parent involvement meetings, were in that one. KBF-r1, parent involvement with Title I district-level involvement. This was previously KBF-r. So it was changed to r1 because with the addition of a second policy under KBF. So this policy refers to the school district's plan and removes that section regarding an annual meeting in the school-family compact, because both of those are addressed in KBF. KBF-r2, this is a brand-new policy not yet adopted, following MSMA recommendations, and we only made slight changes to the MSMA recommendations in language to keep consistent with our other policies. Finally, EB, Environmental Safety Program, a title change to Safety Program and in alignment with the MSMA recommendations. The committee did opt to remove a lot of the first paragraph recommendations to make the policy more concise. Any questions? So I would look for a motion to approve the first read of these policies or accept the first read. Any discussion? So these will come back for a second read within eight weeks because of the holiday, most likely the first meeting in January. We will have a policy meeting the night before that, so if you have any concerns or want us to make any adjustments, we'll be able to discuss it the night before the next school board meeting. All in favor of accepting the first reads? All right. Last up, this was an addition, an adjustment to the agenda for approval of the proposed flyers for school board meeting information and prospective school board members. I'll turn it over to Anastasia, but I had brought this to the H.R. Committee last year to come up with something for people to pick up if they come to a meeting, to kind of find out what's going on, and also for town offices, if they have somebody coming in saying, I'm interested in joining the school board, so that the answer is not just the default, it's two meetings a month, and then you join the school board. So I'll let Anastasia explain it a little bit more.
All right. The RSU fifty-seven Board of Directors, the one flyer, we created more so just for a handout for people that may attend, for the public. It gives a rough idea of what we do, how we manage things. We reference a few policies on it. I mean, it's nuts and bolts of what we do. I mean, we've tweaked this quite a few times, just to make it flow and be quick and to the point. Any questions on that one? The tri-fold is the one that gives more description of our committees, what we do as board members, our role of the board member, our mission, how they can run, and how they can get more information. That will be in our town offices and any local place we would like to put it.
Yeah, we were going to send that out. So this went through the H.R. Committee, kind of started last spring, then we brought it through. We made a bunch of adjustments to both of these to make them as clear and concise and quick and easy for people to review, and now we are bringing it forward for approval by the full board to put these out in the world. So any comments, questions, suggestions on them? Suzanne?
So I mean, I'm glad I joined the board, but I did join very, you know, kind of didn't know what I was, but I wanted to participate in the community in some way. So my story is I went to my first town meeting, just to volunteer for something in town, and ended up volunteering for a school board. But I would have had a more informed decision if I'd had this, so I think it's great that you're doing this, because I think for those of you who knew when I was brand new, I didn't say a word probably for like three to six months because it was so new. So anyways, yep. So I just thought, yeah, that would have been a little bit more helpful.
Working in a town office, like I do, when we have nomination papers that are out, people can start taking papers to run for a school board, planning board, selectmen, whichever position. They've asked me, what's it like being a school board member? It's fantastic. Well, what's the commitment? It's two board meetings a month, and then you have two subcommittees that you sit on. So it's four meetings a month.
Minimum.
Minimum. Now, like, what do you mean minimum? I said, if you're the man on the totem pole and you get stuck on finance, you're there every Wednesday night till...
Right.
You haven't pulled papers out. I know you're not gonna, but it's...
Agreed. I think a lot of us...
But like, H.R. meets more than most subcommittees. Finance meets more than probably board meetings do.
Yep.
Depends where you land on that totem pole.
Right. I think that because the town offices know that we have two school board meetings a month, that's what they tell people, and they're not wrong, but I think a lot of us, especially that have been here a long time, 10 years, eight years, 30 years, we're told it's two meetings a month, and then when you, when you kind of get in into it, it's more than that. So I thought it was really important to have that information, and it was actually requested to me by someone at the town office in Newfield, of if you could come up with something that I could hand to somebody when they said, I'm thinking about the school board, what does it look like? So that's kind of where it started. Angela?
Yes, I was line and sinker for the two, two, I won't mention any names, two meetings a month. Lo and behold, that was not. And yeah, so this would have been great to know really what I was getting into, because first of all, I didn't even know where to start, didn't know where to go, didn't know how to get sworn in, didn't know where to go the second time even, after I won again, because I never did it the first time. So it was like, okay, so what do I do now? Where do I go? And how are you supposed to actually do it? That says that in there?
It doesn't specifically say how you can run, but it does state, how can I run? Go to your municipal office to get nomination paperwork.
Because, yeah, I would have had no idea.
If you're coming to my municipal, I'm going to tell you, nuts and bolts, you need to get at least 30 signatures. When you have all the signatures, we're going to verify that those people are registered voters. You're supposed to have 25. We recommend 30 because, heaven forbid, you have somebody that's not a registered voter that knocks the name off. We tell them, you get on the ballot for, either it's March or June, depending on your town. Limerick gets March. You get voted in, you need to come here before you attend the meeting to get sworn in.
Yeah, I did get told that.
I mean...
The day bef, the day of.
We are, we have changed how we tell people on the meetings, because I was one of you.
Yeah.
Eight years ago, I came in here thinking, two meetings? Cool, I got this. No.
Big changes. We now have new school board member orientations for everyone that joins the school board, so you don't show up at your first meeting without ever meeting the superintendent.
Or you meet him with a, and he hands your books, I'd read this.
Any other discussion on the flyers? Any suggestions? Does everyone think they look good? So I would get a motion to approve, though. Look for a motion to approve them. Pretty popular opinion. All in favor? All right. We will get those out in the world. There's no executive session this evening. Our next school board meeting is January 8th. A reminder that HR next week is canceled, so that is going to be a wrap for the school board on the year. So happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you all for everything. We'll see you soon. Take care. Meeting is adjourned.